I call this regular meeting of the Chester County Board of School Trustees on this 28th day of April, 2025 to order. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as it was emailed to us.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as provided, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next, do I have a motion for the board to move into executive session?
Madam Chair, I move to move to executive session.
Aye. All those in favor of moving into executive session to discuss certified personnel recommendations, contractual matter concerning legal services, student matter concerning instructional materials, and to discuss the superintendent's evaluation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are in executive session.
Do I have a motion for the board to return from executive session?
Madam Chairman, I move that board return to public session.
Second.
All those in favor of returning from executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Without we are now in open session. Okay, to begin our public, to begin our open session, we have public comments.
Invitation.
My apologies. Ms. Brenda Fort will be providing the invocation.
Instead of a prayer, I would like to read something appropriate from First Corinthians, the 12th section, the 12th verse. Now if the foot shall say, because I am not a hand, I do not belong to the body, it would not for that reason stop being part of the body. And if the ear should say, because I am not an eye, I do not belong to the body, it would not for the reason stop being part of the body. If the whole body were an eye, where would the sense of hearing be? If the whole body were an ear, where would the sense of smell be? But in fact, God has placed the parts in the body, every one of them, just as he wanted them to be. And if they were all one part, where would the body be? As it is, there are many parts, but one body. The eye cannot say to the hand, I don't need you. And the head cannot say to the feet, I don't need you. On the contrary, those parts of the body that seem to be weaker are indispensable. And the parts we think are less honorable, we treat with special honor. And the parts that are un-presentable are treated with special modesty, while our presentable parts need those special treatment. But God has put the body together, giving greater honor to the parts that lacked it, so that there should be no division in the body, but that its parts should have equal concern for each other. If one part suffers, every part suffers with it. If one part is honored, every part rejoices with it. And so, thank you. We are all one body.
Thank you, Ms. Fort. Next, we have, if you will, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands united, under God, be indiscernible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, next we'll move on to our special recognitions.
All right, our first recognition will, we will recognize one of our special ed teachers, Ms. Ashley Latimer, for the Albert K. Fretwell Outstanding Educator Award from the Palmetto Council of the Scouting Americas. So the representative, please come forward.
Come on, Cass. Come on. Good evening. Thank you for allowing the Palmetto Council of Scouting America to be here this evening. This is our third year that we get to come present this award, and this year is even extra special. Before we begin, because part of the qualities of being a scout are a reason that Ms. Latimer won this award, we're gonna do the Scout oath and law. Do you think you're ready, guys? Yeah? On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country and to obey the Scout law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. And then we got the second part. You ready? A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Very good. Dr. Albert, Albert Fretwell was our second scout executive for Scouting America National many, many years ago. And he was a firm believer that extracurricular activities are what helps a child in the classroom. So it can relate to scouting, like it does for us, with our three students here from Lewisville Elementary School. Or it could even relate to a child who plays soccer, or football, or basketball, or sings in chorus. And so, every year we ask for nominations. We send these out to the school district, and we never know who's gonna win. We have a committee that picks. And it just so happened that this year, the winner is Ms. Ashley Latimer. So I'm gonna have her come up. We can all clap. Ashley is a teacher at Gray Falls High School for special ed. But she is also a volunteer with PAC 70, who's here tonight. Yeah, and she's our day camp director for our summer camp this summer. So she knows a lot with scouting, and we're extra proud that this award gets to go to her. We have a certificate that Sandy is gonna present you with. And while these extracurricular activities are so important, we know that our scout leaders are only with these kids, these children, an hour or two a week. It's the educators in the classroom that instill those values of trustworthiness, being brave, being thrifty, being reverent, into their, into their little bodies, like our little guys right here. So we're so thankful that you'll allow us to continue doing this. Our scout program is growing in Chester. We have two PACs now. We have PAC 61, and then also 70. And we're just so happy to say that we have 50 Cub Scouts within Chester County, which is up from the previous years. And we have, I think right now, 18 Scouts BSA, which are older, sixth grade and up youth. So thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, to Dr. Sutton, to the entire school board. And I know we'll be seeing you in the fall when we get to come and recruit even more new Cub Scouts and Scouts BSA members. So again, thank you. Congratulations, Ashley. It's an honor to be able to do this for you tonight.
All right, next we have our Rock Star Teacher of the Month.
Our Rock Star Teacher of the Month for the month of March was Tracy Terry from Lewisville Elementary School. Let's give her a big round of applause. Tracy Terry deserves recognition as an outstanding early childhood educator. Tracy is knowledgeable of all early childhood developmental appropriate practices for young learners. Ms. Terry's classroom follows the early, early reading and development program guidelines for South Carolina. Have you seen her in action? Ms. Terry makes learning fun. Just visit her classroom. The sensory table has snow that is a concoction Ms. Terry makes with flour and baby oil. The snow table is perfect for building language and all things snow inside. Take a look at the dramatic play center. Most prop items in the center are created and made by Tracy and her teaching assistants. Whether the center is an apple orchid, or flower shop, or bakery, students are saturated with props to encourage language, language and literacy. These are just a few of the learning centers in her classroom. Or just take a moment to listen while Ms. Terry has a read-aloud with her students. Do you hear the voice of the characters in that story? The students are engaged and answer the open-minded questions at the end. Tracy uses phonics lessons that children can relate to with songs and band movements. I could go on and on about her teaching style. She has the heart of a teacher. She has a learning and, she has learning and behavior expectation. She teaches procedures and routines from day one. She builds a loving, trusting classroom community. Ms. Terry knows children thrive on routine. Just ask Ms. Terry how executive function of a brain relates to behavior learning. She knows why through early childhood research. Tracy has experience in teaching other grades and other levels. Students of various backgrounds, she will quickly tell you that her first love is pre-kindergarten. Ms. Terry has opened arms in a classroom that welcomes inclusion for special needs students. Tracy is a part of the team for inclusion support at Lewisville Elementary. She is also a part of school's leadership and school improvement council. She searches for ways to improve our school. For example, she wrote a grant for new playground equipment. And I must say, on that day, it was ironic that when we went to surprise her, she was outside with, on the playground with those students. Our pre-kindergarten students now have new balls and tricycles, thanks to Ms. Terry's efforts. Tracy is a professional, works well with other staff throughout school, other teachers, office staff, cafeteria workers, custodial staff, and administration. She communicates effectively with parents. She provides support with suggestions for their children to be successful. A rock star teacher is more than an instructional presenter. A rock star teacher is more than knowledge. A rock star teacher is more than a degree. A rock star teacher is more. A rock star teacher has a calling, a definition, an encompassing love to teach with passion so students love to learn. A rock star teacher is Tracy Terry. Our Support Staff Person of the Month for the month of March is Nurse Arlene Fincher. Our Support Staff Person of the Month for the month of March is Nurse Arlene Fincher. We chose Nurse Arlene because she is an unsung hero in our building. She is always willing to go above and beyond to meet the needs of students and staff members. She puts the needs of others above her own daily needs. She communicates with parents regardless of how difficult the conversations might be regarding what is in the best interest of students. We are grateful for a calm, positive presence and demeanor each and every day. Congratulations, Nurse Arlene. Ms. Campbell, you're on a roll, girl, you're on a roll. Dr. Campbell, I'm sorry, Dr. Campbell, you are on a roll. Dr. Campbell, congratulations to Chester Park School of Inquiry for having the highest staff attendance for the month of March. Ninety-six point one six. And Ms. Taylor brought the trophy, she didn't try to give it to her.
Alright, next we're moving on to public comment. We did, we did have one person sign up for public comment, that's Robin Dodson. Alright, the public comment period will adhere to the board's approved policy, VEDH. Public comment is a time for the board to receive information. The board will not debate or comment. The board will only listen during public comment, and will take no formal action on these matters. Persons appearing before the board are reminded that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Speakers may offer objective comments in regards to school operations and programs that concern them. The board will not permit in public session any expression of personal complaints about school personnel, students, or against any other person connected with the school system. Public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes. To maximize participation, each speaker will have a total of three minutes to address the board. No profane or vulgar language will be permitted. Addressing the board does not include the ability to make personal attacks on any board member or district employee. The board chair is authorized to terminate the remarks of any person should the chair determine that the speaker's remarks violate the spirit or letter of this policy. No political campaigning or commercial solicitations will be permitted during public participation.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I come before you tonight, thank you for allowing me to speak, um, with four, four concerns. And the most serious one is a safety issue of, for, for school district students. And the, um, the safety issue that I have, I have a safety issue I wanna speak about. I wanna speak about the New Chester County subdivision draft code. I have, uh, I wanna talk about collaboration, and I wanna talk about impact fees, just very quickly. I hope I don't run over my time, but I hope you'll be gracious with me. The safety issue is with, uh, Highway nine and the Walker's Mill subdivision. There's a dangerous school bus stop at a major crossroads between Westbrook Road and nine oh one that goes down a blind curve where the speed limit is fifty-five miles an hour. I experienced this bus stop unexpectedly going down the hill towards the Fishing Creek Bridge. The bus was stopped at the crossroads, which is also the entrance to the Walker's Mill subdivision. It was a scary experience, I had to put on my brakes quickly, and I, it's just easily an accident that's waiting to happen at that crossroads. It's crazy, it's a crossroads with, with subdivision, Westbrook Road, and nine oh one, which is in terrible shape. The Knights Bridge Development also drops off on, from Highway nine oh one. And I wanna know what are the South Carolina state, uh, school bus laws for dropping off into planned developments? Or high-density subdivisions? Why doesn't the bus go up into the subdivision? With a huge amount of increased traffic due to increased housing? I wanna know, uh, why it appears that the safety, uh, of students, uh, isn't considered more, more, um, more properly. And I want you to truly try to work on this situation. I'd be glad to show it to anyone, uh, if you'd like to come, I'm in the Lewisville School District, okay? The, um, the second thing I wanna talk about is, um, the Chester County, uh, the Chester County is, has new subdivision draft codes, they're in the draft stage. And section two point seven nine states, uh, an interesting, uh, proposition for Chester County School District. And I wanna read that for you as it comes from the draft. It says, quoting, "Reservation of public sites. To ensure the orderly development of the community, the subdivider may be required to reserve and negotiate to sell needed spaces for parks, schools, fire stations, and playgrounds as required by local government units for period not to exceed thirty days from the submission of the sketch plan, but it may be extended for an additional thirty days if you contact the planning commission, you file with them, and ask that you want a desire to negotiate." Probably two to three years ago, um, I was in a meeting at the gateway, and it was of the, um, of our area when the new subdivisions were coming in. And, um, Dr. Sutton said, "If you give us land, we'll build a school." And it made my heart so happy, I thought, "These subdivisions coming in, if they just give us the land, you, you'll build us a school, okay?" This leads to my third point, which is, um, there's a great need for the school district and the county to collaborate. Over thirty-two hundred homes have been approved in the Lewisville area. And I feel like we need to work together. I feel like school district personnel need to be at the county council meetings and with the planning commission. And I also feel like vice versa, the county needs to come and be represented in the school board meetings as well. So that we can learn.
Ms. Dodger, over your time.
But may I ask for an extension, please, for the board vote?
Yeah, if you can just.
Okay, I've just got a second more.
Okay.
Okay? Over fifty percent of our taxes come from the Lewisville School attendance area. Of the tax revenue in the whole county comes from Lewisville Schools' attendance area. So I feel like, um, we should collaborate, and to ignore this seems pretty neglectful, in my opinion. And the third and fourth thing I wanna speak about is impact fees. And in, in January, the House submitted bill, it's three one six five, and they modified it. And now, impact fees, um, there's some changes that happen with impact fees. And I'd like that, ask the school district, where are you in possibly working with the county to develop impact fees? They're third, twenty-eight thousand dollars per home in Fort Mill. That would go a long way towards textbooks, or a school bus, or whatever you might wanna buy. And one of the major things that hit me with the impact fees, but with this now, it's, used to be three years, you had to dispense the fees, but now you get seven years, seven years. And those fees trickle in, every time a building, uh, a building permit is issued, that money would trickle in. So you'd have a time to accumulate that money, make a good decision about it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dodson.
So I do have, um, if you have any questions, and I, um, I have the, um, impact. Thank you.
Alright, next we have our executive session action items. Do I have a motion that we approve the certified personnel recommendations as provided in executive session?
Madam Chairman, uh, move that we accept the certified personnel recommendation as presented.
Say. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the certified personnel recommendations as presented in executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Alright, next, if you're following along on your agenda, you will see that there was originally an executive session at, action item titled legal, legal services contract renewal. The board in April of each year is required by our board policy to evaluate our attorney's legal services. However, we do not actually have a contract with our attorneys who are providing the legal services. We did conduct the evaluation, um, in executive session, as stated within our policy, but there is no contract to actually take, um, action on. So we will be moving on to number ten, the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the previous meetings, meetings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Alright, do I have a motion that we approve the overnight, actually, we'll go ahead and do that. We'll approve the overnight field trip request? Alright, that was covered under the consent agenda. Alright, next we'll move on to number eleven, staff reports. Mr. Thomas Barr, operations report.
Good evening, School Board, Board Chair, and members of the public. As the operations department begins to prepare for summer, we still have several projects that are in closing or still in progress. Uh, we received, uh, our third seventy-two passenger bus, uh, activity bus for one hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars. We also received our fourth for one hundred forty-eight thousand sixty-four dollars. The second is a sixty-six passenger handicap accessible bus with the capability of accommodating two wheelchairs. Seats can be added or removed in this bus if needed. Our Great Falls High School bleacher project was completed for two hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars. Our Lewisville Middle School and Chester Middle School canopy projects were completed for a combined of four, forty-three thousand six hundred five dollars eighty-two cents. We have several projects that continue to be, uh, worked on as we, over the spring break. Great Falls Elementary pre-K fencing extension, uh, that has begun, and the price is nine thousand one hundred eighty dollars. The Chester Park Elementary pre-K fencing extension has begun, and that price was forty-six thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars twelve cents. The Chester High School base, baseball dugout project has begun. Uh, they poured the concrete base, and it's twenty-one days before they can begin to build a structure on the base. That price is one hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars. And the Lewisville Elementary School addition project continues, and that's priced at four point four million. And that project will continue until early August. This concludes my report.
Okay, I just wanted to shake with the board. So we did pencil in some space to discuss the five, five-year capital improvement plan. If any of the board members have any questions? I know that we had a very long work session where we went through each of these items line by line. I wanted to give any of the board members any opportunity to ask any questions or follow-ups. We did not put this on the agenda for a final vote. Um, as last week was spring break, and I did wanna give everyone time to absorb and kind of think through this plan. So with that, does any of the board members have any questions or concerns? Or anything specifically they would like to discuss regarding the, um, capital improvement plan?
Are the changes that we talked about gonna be updated and sent to us? On the five-year capital improvements? I noticed that nothing was updated.
Well, yes ma'am, I'm, I'm waiting on, uh, the, the board's direction, uh, that we'll update the plan if needed.
Yes, I think the one that you're specifically referring to is the Lewisville Plumben specifically. That, that was something that was discussed being moved up into that, that first year. Is that right?
Yes.
And then there were some other changes? Alright, there's no other discussion, we'll move on. Next for the financial report, Mr. McDowell.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Vice Chair, members of, members of the board, members of the public, staff with us today. And your packet, you should have received prior to spring break, was the comparative monthly financial statements for the period July first, twenty twenty-four to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Shows our revenue recorded through the period was forty-eight million eighty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty, eighty-seven dollars. Our expenditures for the same period was forty-five million five hundred and, forty-five million five hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So revenues exceeded expenditures in the amount of two million five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, eight hundred and four, five hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. As we continue to go through the budget process, um, we will have the first reading on the budget in May. The final reading will be June the ninth. There's, I did receive an update today, kind of on the, the senate side. So after hours of deliberation, the senate on Wednesday gave third reading to its version of the twenty-five, twenty-six state appropriation plan. Very little has changed from the house version to the senate version. The one topic is, you know, the budget bill will be returned to the house, where it is expected to be amended further. And then we'll move forward to a conference committee. The conference committee will be composed of three members from the house and three members from the senate to determine the final version of the budget. Once the differences have been decided, each body will need to approve the conference report. Also, last week, we, Dr. Sutton and I was on a statewide call with SCASA, state superintendents, state CFOs, to discuss the, um, state aid to classroom funding for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. There has been some, the funding formula has brought to light some variances and some differences in between the traditional funding for, uh, public schools and for the funding for public charter schools. The one number that kind of stuck out to me was out of a hundred and twelve million dollars of additional funding for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, twenty-one million dollars is being allocated to your traditional schools. Ninety million dollars is being allocated to the charter districts. Part of their, part of the, you know, one of the key takeaways, and we heard, so we had charter district CFOs there, we had public district CFOs there, we had state superintendents there. And there was a lot of, you know, a lot of conversation was had to kind of figure out, how can we work on this, how can we address the funding formula? The way it is at the current state, if somebody gets more, somebody's gonna get less. So they're trying to find out a way, and they came up with, you know, some, some differences, maybe they can increase the funding. Use the hold harmless for charters, hold harmless for districts. But as the timeline slips away on us, because it's gotta go to the conference committee, May sixth through the eighth, I'm not real, I'm not real hopeful we'll see a lot of change this coming year for the twenty-five, twenty-six year of the state funding. That just goes, you know, whenever we ask the state, how can we forecast our state revenue? And they, the state level can't give us an answer on, this is how you forecast it, 'cause it's all based into a state pot with weighted people units and ADM. And it gets, it gets very complicated, and they can't explain it very well. So we're hoping that this meeting that we had kind of shed some light. I think it has gotten into the ears of some politicians who were on the, kind of the onset of the approval of the funding formula. And hopefully, they will kind of see some of the concerns coming from the traditional school districts around the state of South Carolina. One number that kind of stuck out, so, uh, charter schools enrollment has increased eight thousand sixteen from last, over the year, while the traditional schools enrollment declined seven thousand. Now, this is traditional versus charter across the state. Charter students now receives significantly more funding per student compared to traditional students. For instance, in twenty-six, it's eight hundred and eighty for charters versus eighty-six dollars for traditional students. In FY twenty-six, charter districts- In FY twenty-six, charter districts will receive forty-five point three-three percent of the new funding while representing only seven point four-nine percent of the students. So there was, there was a lot of kind of back and forth on, you know, why did this get this way? Nobody had a good answer. We're hoping that SCASA with the involvement of state legislature and the superintendents around the state. And she's also, the, the SCASA director has communicated with different stakeholders, whether it's the state legislature, whether it is, uh, revenue and fiscal affairs. The senate finance, charter school superintendents, along with public traditional school superintendents and CFOs. Because this is, you know, we've got a, we know charter schools are in this district to stay. We just wanna, we just want the funding to be more equalized out across the, across the state as far as educating students. The budget calendar before you, I just went over that. Kind of the timeline of what we have for the remainder of the year. The last piece, and I didn't, I don't have a presentation for this, but it was the, uh, you also received in your packet, the model policy. For the first reading tonight, this, the consolidated procurement code is approved by the South Carolina, uh, Office of Procurement. This is the document as, as, as it stands. Some of the, you know, kind of some of the highlights to, it modernizes the procurement thresholds and processes to match the current state and federal guidelines. We, it formalizes kind of written justifications and what the process is for sole source and emergency, emergency purchases. It expands the procurement methods to allow construction management at risk and design build options. It strengthens the minority business outreach efforts and documentation. It aligns our retention records with state and federal requirements for procurement and capital projects. It clarifies the internal protest and appeals procedure to protect the district's interest. And it strengthens the conflict of interest policies to meet federal UGG standards. This concludes my report unless anyone has any questions.
Mr. McDowell, I do have one quick question. So in our budget work session, um, you provided us with the updated funding, potential funding for each of the schools. And that is based on the one hundred and thirty-five ADM. Can you just explain to us the difference between the average daily membership and how that's calculated versus active enrollment?
The ADM is actually based on the hundred and thirty-five days of daily enrollment. So it takes the hundred and thirty-five days that those students were actively enrolled into that school. So then it averages out that number, cause you'll see some variances. A school will say, I have six hundred students, um, but if you actually pull their ADM, their ADM may only show five eighty-nine or five ninety. Cause that's, the state numbers are basing it on the, on the average daily membership in that particular school.
And then within your, within your budget, um, the allocations that were provided to us. So it's, it's based on the one hundred and thirty-five ADM and multiplied by the pupil.
Yes ma'am.
So with that, we are, how, how do you come up with that calculation? Cause I'm, I'm, I'm.
So the hundred, the, the ADM number, and I remember I told you in the budget workshop, that was kind of the preliminary number. We haven't received the final hundred and thirty-five day, they haven't been certified by the state yet. Once we get that certified number in, I'll update those numbers and it's not gonna fluctuate a lot one way or the other from what was presented to the final approved version. But that calculator and factor has been used in this district for a number of years. We did increase it several years ago. And I had to go back and look at my notes to see what the factor was for high school, middle school, and elementary, how, how it was increased. And from my, what I have discussed with different CFOs around the state, every, every district has their own allocation method. Some are very granular to where they allocate funding based to a certain program and each program gets twenty-five dollars per student. And it rolls up into one, but this been, this district's practice to use that allocation method since I've been in the district since two thousand and four.
So just curious, so I understand this is an allocation and this is an estimate. So the one hundred and thirty-five day, which is based on attendance, not based on active enrollment.
Correct.
The number that's shown under a hun, one hundred and thirty-five day, is that the estimated student based on attendance that we're going to be funding for? Or are we just using that one hundred and thirty-five day to give you an active enroll, uh, estimated active enrollment number to fund by?
Correct. Yes, because the way the state funds is, is they put weighted pupil units to those each. And that's kind of what's a lot of the confusion that's come in with the charter schools, because the traditional students gets a one weighting. A special ed student gets a two-point-six weighting. Um, and they've got different add-on weightings, whether you're gifted and talented, uh, learning, uh, IEP or, um, language, language, English proficiency, and I can't speak. And, uh, there's another one like pupils in poverty, so there's add-on weightings. What's happened with the charter school allocation is they get the one pupil weighting, plus they also get a one point five for a brick and border. So they're actually getting two point five weightings per students where we're only getting that one. Um, so that's, and then you run, you take those numbers and we, we, when we report that to the state, we've got those weightings. And that's how they figure out our weighted pupil unit to fund us on that way.
So I understand the state funds us based on the ADM, I get that.
Correct.
But, and we're using the ADM to calculate estimates for our individual school budgets.
Correct.
But at the end of everything, are we funding our schools based on the ADM or are we funding it based on actual enrollment?
We're funding based on the ADM number that's submitted to the state.
Which is, which is typically lower than the actual, actual enrolled.
I would have to go.
Well, I mean, it would have to be less.
I would have to get with the CNI power school people to see what the, what the, how big of a variance it is between active enrollment and act, actual active ADM, or actual ADM.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, I do have two questions. We get our funding, as you told Ms. Fundabert, but also based on the number of teachers that you estimate. And so what is the estimated total number of teachers in our district that are funded?
The total teachers in our district is three hundred and seventy, around that area, yes.
Okay, and the other thing is, uh, when are you going to update the website as to the statements and credit cards, of the checks and credit cards?
Uh, when I, when I get it back in, I get it loaded, I, I go through and I redact the information and I forward it. It's probably sitting in my inbox, I just, my inbox is buried.
Okay, well, I rely on that to look at.
Okay.
Just hadn't seen it updated.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll go back and check and see if I've received the email. If I haven't, I'll request it and if I have, I'll try to get it updated by the end of the week.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you, Mr. McDowell. Next we have the curriculum and instruction report, Dr. Denise Khalid.
Alright, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So we're gonna share, I will have, um, Ms. Liz Bridges, if you'll come up and she's gonna do a portion of our, um, report this evening. Of course, you all know this is our North Star and, uh, we do take very seriously making sure that our students, uh, do meet this profile of the South Carolina graduate. And what you have in terms of our strategic plan and our school, um, renewal plans that I'll talk a little bit more about later. Um, all of that works together to make sure that this, uh, profile can become a reality for more and more of our South, our Chester County School District students. Uh, as always, we also talk about our goals, which are to, uh, improve our students academically, um, as well as socially and emotionally strengthen our relationships with our schools. Um, and really building, building our capacity and our staff capacity. And what we mean by that is our knowledge and understanding, uh, because there is a lot to, um, teaching and learning. We were in some training today and, uh, learned a lot that's gonna inform some of the work that we'll be doing moving forward. And Ms. Liz Bridges is gonna talk to you a little bit about, um, literacy and what we have going to support our students and staff.
Thank you. Good evening to our board chair, our board members, um, those members of the public that are here with us in the room and those that are joining online. Um, I am Liz Bridges and it is a pleasure to be with you all tonight. I know I've had an opportunity to meet some of you, but haven't had an opportunity to meet every one of you. So I just want to tell you that it has been such a pleasure to spend my first year here in Chester County School District. It has been some of the most challenging work that I've ever done, um, but it has been some of the most rewarding work that I've ever done. So it, it is just a pleasure to be with you and a, a pleasure to work with our teachers, our administrators, all of our district personnel. So I a lot of times think in terms of list and so I always think about like, what, what am I doing now? What are my next step, or what's in progress and what are my next steps? So that's kind of the way I report, how I organize the report for tonight. So I just wanna share with you just a few updates, um, of, oh, yes, I will. Just wanna share with you a few updates on all of those things. So we're gonna start with the things that are completed or just about completed, um, by the end of the school year. This is my favorite because when you get to check something off a list, it just feels great, right? Um, so first of all, one thing that we have continued to do that is a continuation from last year is just ongoing training and support for all of our teachers in K through twelve. On our new South Carolina literacy standards. It just takes a while to get used to a new set of standards, so we have continued to work on that. Um, our coaches have been, been a big part of that work, so I, I have to give them, um, I have to give them a shout out. Also, we had new curriculum that was implemented this year that came from our state. And so those, the names of those two programs are HMH Inter Reading, um, that's our elementary curriculum. And then our secondary curriculum is called Study Sync. So a lot of work has been done throughout this year to support our teachers with those new curriculum. Because there is so much to learn anytime you start a new curriculum, so we've done a lot of work there. Um, excited to share that we had a new cohort of teachers this year that embarked on the letters training. For those of you that may be kind of new to the letters training term, that is actually, it's not a curriculum. It is a professional development program that helps to educate our teachers on best practices for literacy. It focuses heavily in the first year on foundational literacy skills, phonics, phonemic awareness, um, vocabulary. And then in year two, heavy focus on writing and, um, writing and, um, comprehension, thank you. And so we have a new cohort of teachers that began that. So our Great Falls Elementary School and our Lewisville Elementary School teachers are working on that and about to finish their first year. That would be our K through three teachers. We also had an opportunity this year to allow our pre-K teachers and assistants to train on letters for early childhood teachers. And so they are nearing completion of that course as well. And that has also heavily focused on foundational skills. That is all very exciting. Um, a few other things to note, our secondary coaches have been working this year on a book study called, on a book called Student Centered Coaching. And that book helps them to think about their coaching in terms of our students. It's a data-driven approach to coaching, so that we're always putting, putting our students at the center. And it helps us to evaluate how effective our coaching is based on how our students are doing. We have been able to do an after-school tutoring program this year for our third grade that really targeted our third grade students who are at risk for retention with the Read to Succeed legislation. So we're excited that we were able to do that. Um, we also, one exciting of it, there, that top picture that you're seeing on this slide is from our Ufly implementation support visits that we just recently had. So for those of you who may not be familiar, we have a program called Ufly. That's an acronym that stands for Uni, University of Florida Literacy Institute. And that is a foundational skills curriculum that we use in our elementary schools. So we were able to bring in representatives from the University of Florida to work with our teachers. They got to meet with our teachers, they got to visit our classrooms and got to have a PD that was focused specifically on our needs here in Chester County. So that was a really great part of our second semester. We have also made sure to support our K through eight teachers, especially our third through eighth grade teachers and our English two teachers on the new text dependent writing assessment. That is part of our state assessment. And finally, I know some of you are already aware that we had a spelling bee for our students in grades four through eight. And we had two students that are pictured there who went on to compete in the Carolina Panthers Regional Bee, so that was exciting. And we just recently, right before spring break, had our Battle of the Books Middle School competition that our students were able to compete in. That was a lot of fun as well. So those are all the things that have been accomplished. I wanna tell you a little bit about what we have in process. So right now, something that we're working on and our coaches are really helping with a lot of this work, but our teachers are also helping too, is revising our literacy pacing guides. So our pacing guides kind of help our teachers know what to teach when. But we felt like there is so much work that our teachers have to do day to day. So our pacing guide revisions are working on making this a more manageable amount of indicators to teach in a certain timeframe. But also giving our teachers support as far as resources that will match those indicators. So we're in the middle of that revision. We are also busy preparing for summer reading camp. That will take place in the month of June and will focus on our second and third grade students who are at risk for retention in third grade due to the Read to Succeed legislation. And finally, we are evaluating with the help of our interventionists in K through five. We are evaluating our intervention programs, um, and our progress monitoring tools. We're just looking to make sure that what we're doing is working for our students. And finally, one thing that we have started is working on a coaching framework. So we have coaches in all of our schools, but we wanna make sure that our coaching is equitable, that we're consistent from school to school. That we all share the same beliefs, that we all share the same vision, and so we are working on that coaching framework now. And finally, in near future, our next steps will be to implement that new coaching framework. Um, we also hope our pacing guides can be implemented in the fall as a one-stop shop. So our teachers will be able to go to that pacing guide for their assessments, for resources. And just help us to strengthen our tier one instruction, our instruction that all of our students receive. Um, we are working this summer on developing common ELA assessments so that that way, if you are taking, if you're at Great Falls Elementary School or at Lewisville Elementary School. We're giving equitable instruction across the district. And finally, we are starting to think about a district-wide writing and research focus for next year. Cause those seem to be needs based on feedback from our teachers and just what we're seeing, um, as far as our data. So that concludes my report, but I would love to answer any questions that you might have. And if not, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Enjoyed seeing you.
Thank you, Liz. And so, um, hopefully in hearing that information and you all received, um, a copy of our district strategic plan goals, uh, as well as the, um, goals for all of our schools. So I know that was a lot. I have it right here and I've been, I had to read and work with our teams, um, at the schools, all that, this information. But it is important for us to definitely have a target that we are, we're shooting for, um, for targets across the district. So just a little bit of background information regarding the district strategic plan, and this is really applicable to our school renewal plans as well. Is that these are developed and up, developed every five years, but updated annually. And there's the legislation and the code, um, that underscores, uh, the fact that this is something that we are required to do, but it is, is a good practice for us as well. Um, so we are in the current five-year cycle, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And each year, um, our plans are due on April thirtieth and they are effective. And I use air quotes for that because really you're working it all year long, but they are effective, uh, July first. Uh, but we do submit it, we receive feedback, um, as applicable from our state department or my state department point of contact. And I hope that you, in hearing what, um, Ms. Bridges shared, that you understand that this is not a plan that we just check a box and put on the shelf. That it is meant to be what I like to call a living document, is what we do. Um, and that we revise it, um, as needed, um, as well, so that we can make sure that we are, uh, being responsive to our schools and to our students and to our, our various stakeholders. So as far as the district strategic plan, we have, uh, required stakeholders. You can see the list there, I'm not gonna read it to you. We had our meeting on April fifteenth and I. We had our meeting on April fifteenth and I certainly appreciate our school leaders in um getting our volunteers to come in. We had a wonderful conversation uh with them, they, with our stakeholders before spring break, and they gave us some great input, uh really thoughtful responses about our goals and action steps that we can take. Uh, and so our families, our community representatives, our school leaders, everyone wants to see our students and our schools succeed. So we were appreciative for that, that input. And I, and I will say at the school level, they, they do the same thing. So this process is mirrored, it may not have the exact same stakeholders, but it is mirrored at the school level. Um, with the district strategic plan, we are required to have gifted and talented goals for academic and artistic, school climate, student achievement, teacher administrator quality. And I'll just have a parentheses for us in the student achievement that ours um addresses English Language Arts, math, science, US history, and our graduation rate. And our goals are written as SMART goals, um, and that acronym there, as you can see, is specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. And then we do have uh where we project results from year to year and then what we act, what the actual results are from year to year. So I'm not going to read all of this to you, but this just captures the fact that our ELA, that our gifted and talented goals are centered around ELA performance as well as math performance in our third through fifth grade and our sixth through eighth grade um uh programs. And with our gifted and talented, also with our artistic. Now, you have our uh results and so the actual data for our uh GT ELA and math for grade six through eight. We did meet that last year. Those projections, however, third through fifth grade math um pretty much stayed the same. In terms of school climate, uh this addresses whether the percentage of our students and our parents who are satisfied with the learning environment, and we did see an increase uh in meeting that goal with the parents, but we had a decrease in terms of our student perceptions. With student achievement, uh this addresses our elementary, third through eighth grade uh performance as well as English two. And with both of those uh goals and the, the interim assess, interim targets, we didn't meet. And then for our math, uh you can see again, that is an area that we certainly are working to improve along with all the others. Uh, we were just slightly uh short of meeting the three through eight goal, uh but we did meet um and actually exceed the goal for our Algebra I. And then with student achievement as far as graduation rate, we did have a dip in our graduation rate at our schools, and we've been putting in some structures and checkpoints throughout the year uh to work with our schools on really monitoring that and those cohorts across all grades. So we should see uh based on preliminary information that we've been having uh in, an increase as far as the overall district grad rate. And biology, uh we didn't meet that interim goal. And for US history, uh we met the interim goal. Um, but there again, lots of um growth and, and work still needed. And then our final is the um teacher quality and continuing contract teachers. And so we did see um a dip in, in the continuing contract status. Um, so that will continue uh to be one of the goals that we have listed um on our district strategic plan as well. So that's just an overview of the, the goal areas. Uh, as far as the schools, they don't have to have the gifted and talented, but they do have to address climate, achievement, and um teacher administrator quality as well. And then you have our general reminders. Uh, we hope to see you at our district superintendent's art showcase tomorrow at Chester Middle School. It starts at six o'clock. We've got progress reports going home this week. We are in the fourth quarter, it's very hard to believe that. And spring testing um is here and actually will start on May fifth. We had to do an adjustment for our elementary um with writing, so they will start on May fifth um instead of May sixth. And um, so we have end-of-course testing, high school exams, and just really need all of our students at school on time every day as usual. Um, but especially bright and bushy-tailed for our assessments that we have coming up. And um, and the others are just the typical reminders that we have about that homeschool communication and being in school. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kalid.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I need to, to clear this information up. Under the performance goals, that um is the average baseline where we are now as a district?
So average baseline was our, basically our um, our baseline data in twenty-one, twenty-two. So we, we were rewriting these plans in twenty-two, twenty-three. We did not have the data at that time, so our baseline um had to be the prior, the pre, the data from the previous year. So that's that average baseline is our, our starting point, and that's also reflected in the goal statement. So you'll see, for instance, with school uh climate, um, you know, the baseline was forty-one point four percent, and that's in the goal statement, that's also um listed in the, the baseline box that you all have there in that table. So it's basically where we started, and that's how we figure our growth.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Kalid.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next we have our human resources report, Mr. Wendell Sumter.
Okay, um, I don't have a lot to report today. I do want to uh take my opportunity to invite uh the board and uh community to our twenty-twenty-five Chester County School District Award Celebration. Uh, this award celebration will be held uh May sixth uh with a reception from five to six PM. And then the celebration award ceremony will be at six PM. Um, and this will be where we would announce our Teachers of the Year, Support Staff of the Year, Rookie Teacher of the Year um during this uh great celebration. So we invite you um to be a part of that. Um, as you all know as well, we have issued contracts uh for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, and currently, um sixty-one point nine percent, sixty-two percent of teachers have signed their contracts, uh which is good. And then um out of all contracts as classified employees and everyone, um sixty-three percent of those persons have um signed their contracts. So uh they have until May tenth to do that. I know my principals out there are working hard to get them to go ahead and sign. So um hopefully, um they will do those as soon as possible so that we can um have a better understanding of where we stand as far as uh current vacancies. And right now, for current vacancies, we have fifteen, fifteen teacher vacancies um currently. Thank you.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
So in our last meeting, we talked about the SouthCarolinaTeacher.org survey um that was done for workplace conditions. And you told us that sixty-seven percent of teachers, of our teachers completed that survey, which was a really outstanding number, um especially considering our exit surveys last year. We only had fifteen percent of teachers who were actually exited and leaving in the school district that fill out those surveys. Um, during that meeting, I, I requested that you look into us utilizing the free SouthCarolinaTeacher.org exit survey for this coming uh, well, the end of the school year. Um, have you had an opportunity to do that?
Yes, we are signed up to participate in that as well.
Okay, so our exit surveys will be going out from SouthCarolinaTeacher.org this year.
We'll, we'll still do ours, but in addition to doing ours, we will have the uh South Carolina Teacher Survey. The way the South Carolina Teacher Survey works, uh we send them all of the uh email information for the staff that will be um leaving us, and then they will send it to them. We don't actually send the survey to those persons, the SC teacher will send that to them.
I understand, all right, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Any other questions? All right, next moving on to our administrative services report, Mr. Hezekiah Massey.
Good evening uh to all members of the School Board of Trustees. I'd first like to um share that of course, registration is open. It is that time of year to start to prepare for next school year. Uh, the district has embarked on using a new platform called Final Forms. Uh, this program streamlines the previous process and it is a more user-friendly uh program that uh we've tried to debug and work out all of the kinks uh prior to its release. We've gotten good feedback so far. Uh, the process of, of course, involves the validation of returning students and then of course, the new enrollment or the enrollment of new students to our district. So wanted to make sure that the board was where we are. Uh, we did change our program and the program is working. Uh, it's more widely used in the state of South Carolina, um and it is working fine so far. Uh, May is mental health awareness month. Um, of course, the mental health of our students and staff is vitally important. Um, as we recognize uh May as being Mental Health Awareness Month, uh the school district is working to uh create partnerships, one being that with NAMI of Chester. Of course, NAMI has a local office here and they work uh across the nation uh to help bring uh forward uh support for those that suffer from mental illness. Uh, the NAMI uh program uh that, that we're trying to start in Chester School District next year, in our school district next year involves having student-led mental health teams uh at the secondary level. Um, Nation's Ford High School and Fort Mill is the only high school in uh state of South Carolina that, that has a mental health team of students. Uh, we hope to have the second one here in Chester this upcoming fall. And so uh Mr. Terrence Randolph has been working with our counselors to hopefully get a program off the ground uh for this upcoming school year. May is also of course recognized as um our uh healthy nutrition and healthy eating. That is the theme for our Wellness Wednesdays Initiative. On May seventh, our staff are asked to wear orange in recognition of our theme for the month of May. Uh, this is in time for us to uh make sure that all staff are aware and are participating in this uh, in this program. Uh, Dr. Sutton and I will also recognize the school, um hopefully, one of our schools that um has completed enough of the initiatives for the grant. Uh, last year, I think it was ATL that received the grant. And so this year, towards the end of the month, hopefully, principals, as you're listening, you have checked all the boxes and will qualify to receive up to five thousand dollars for um winner, to be the uh recognized winner of the grant for this upcoming school year. Okay, next I'd like to bring forward Ms. Tanya Barton uh and Mr. Roderick Byers to discuss an initiative that is a tri-county initiative for um Chester, Lancaster, and Fairfield Counties. But uh we have uh secured the services of Mr. Byers as Youth Project Coordinator uh for this project. So, Ms. Barton.
Good evening and thank you for having me here. My name is again, Tanya Barton. I am with um the University of South Carolina's Children's Law Center. We are part of the Joseph F. Rice School of Law. And beside me, I have our newest employee to our um Children's Law Center, our juvenile justice team, Roderick Byers. So last year, I would say, oh goodness, probably about February of last year, we, the Children's Law Center, we received a call from um our, a colleague here at Chester County Schools asking for some support or some assistance with school attendance. So our Children's Law Center have been doing a lot of stuff on truancy across the state. And at the time, our team was kind of like, we weren't really working on the attendance thing. We had some other uh focuses. But an opportunity presented itself. So there was a call, there was a grant application that was put out for, it's called the Burn State Crisis Intervention Program. Don't know if you've, if you've ever heard of it, but it's like a, it's a community-based uh project. It's like a safer, um, what do we call it? Uh, supporting safest communities. So it's like a, on a federal level, there was a movement to like build up relations between law enforcements and their communities. And um that particular program was addressing gun violence-related issues. Well, South Carolina received some funds, right? Congress said, "South Carolina, you, here's a pot of money for you to work on some things that you all find important." And our um South Carolina Department of Public Services said, "Well, we have uh an epidemic of youth-related gun violence issues in our state." So they put out a call and we said, "Whoa, well, maybe we can use this opportunity." I mean, it's not a truancy thing, but we know that if children feel unsafe, if there's things that are happening in communities, it may impact attendance, it may impact um how well they're doing in school, well-being. And so we applied and we called out and said, "Chester County, can we get some of your support?" Um, Chester County Sheriff's Department, uh it's kind of like a partnership with law enforcement. So we got letters of support and lo and behold, we were awarded the grant. So uh as of October, uh this past October, we received a grant. It took a little while to get things started. Like you heard earlier, you go with procurement and sole source and getting everything and contracts in place, we've arrived. Uh, so we have um Roger on board. What we're looking to do in the three counties is to, one, do a community needs assessment. So we're looking for our um Youth Project Coordinator to get a chance to know, get to know you all, get to know what the needs are in the communities. Um, and again, working with Chester, Fairfield, Lancaster County, law enforcement, um community stakeholders, parents, um community-based organizations, along with our juvenile justice, to keep young people, one, you know, want them to be arrested or incarcerated. So that's one part of the um deflection and recovery, keeping them out of institutions. Or two, um addressing any of those underlying issues that would cause young people to engage in violence, using guns. So that would be the mental health, trying to meet their needs where they are, keeping them safe within the communities, keeping them out of hospitals. So out of our deep end, addressing the needs on the, the boots on the ground. Let me see. Five things that we're looking to bring along with the needs assessment, um uh mobile resource application. So we're working with partners to create an iOS, Android mobile app of regional, community-based resources. So the app is in partnership with the Children's Justice of South Carolina. They have a, a resource link, so we're hoping to be able to start identifying where are the food banks? If folks in Chester County or the three counties need food, where do they go? If, if children need clothes to attend school, where do they go? If families need um supplies, yes, any kinds of, where do they go? So that will be one of um the coordinator's jobs to get out there. You know, there's a lot of resources that we typically tap into, but there's a lot of uncovered gems within the counties that we really need to kind of, our state agencies are, are struggling. There's, they're struggling, so we need to be able to come up with the things in the communities. The other things are um, we are looking to bring in three virtual um trainings on ACIS, Adverse Childhood Experiences. So we're looking to kind of train up um our professionals and our community folks on what is, what is adverse childhood experiences and how to kind of mitigate uh these youth who are experiencing these um adversities from engaging in violence. And then we are looking to bring in some Protective Factors training. We are looking to bring in a healthy, a building healthy communities training. So a lot of um empowerment to the three counties via education, awareness, and actual resources. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Just a footnote, uh Mr. Byers is a former student of mine. He's a, a college athlete, professional athlete. He played football at Clemson University. And uh was part of Carolina Panthers as well, so he brings a wealth of resources and experience. Uh, we have a connection and it just was, you know, really uh uh in the cards for someone that I've worked with in the, at the high school level to now grow into. He's a little taller than I am, I understand. But uh, no, somebody that I, I really trust and someone I've heard speak and do phenomenal things in the community uh to be here in Chester. And one reason in working with Ms. Barton, she said, you know, of course, we wanted to pull the resource here to Chester so that we would be uh really, you know, the primary firsthand uh receivers of, of what good things that this grant program has. And so Mr. Uh Byers will be based here in Chester at one of our schools and uh will engage in the projects as deemed uh by the grant. But um he is definitely a resource that I bring before you, that we bring before you this evening, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes my portion of the report.
Mr. Macy, I just have one quick question regarding registration. So, I, I did notice in the email that was sent out to parents regarding registration, it stated that no waivers will be received this year. So, I just want to make sure that the attendance and registration at each one of the schools, that they're going to have the assistance of the district office, especially when, I know throughout the years, um, the utilities being uploaded, the verification of residence is always, always kind of a sticking point. Then with the new program and, and then with the, the statement that waivers will not be submitted, I just want to make sure that the district office is going to be providing, um, support and resources because I know that at the school level, that's going to create, there's going to be a lot of questions. There's going to be a lot of questions. There's going to be, um, a lot coming in when, when people actually start getting into that tool and registering.
You're right. Yeah, a, a lot of districts are using final forms now. They've shifted from the old system, uh, that, you know, require registrars to go back and validate, um, without even getting any notice. Final forms communicates directly back to the parent and to the school. Um, in terms of assistance, um, anytime, and, and, and Ms. Harrington did a great job along with, uh, Ms. Key in training all of the clerks at the school building level. Uh, when they run into hiccups, you know, here's what you do first, here's what you do second. Um, we actually ran tests on individual staff members that have children to go through the process first, to be able to kind of debug all of those things. And then, when they found hiccups, those things were listed and then we went back through and checked the system again to say, "Here's a list of things, common problems that you could run into if you go through this process." And so, um, the clerks feel very confident so far in the feedback I'm getting and using the program. But as that, um, as they do run into hiccups, Ms. Harrington is, is going to be, um, first to call.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, could I ask Mr. Bar a question? I apologize for not being on the ball.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Bar, I, on this list that we're given, the five-year capital improvement, is the guttering at Great Falls High and Middle School, is that going to be handled out of maintenance instead of this? Okay? And the other thing is, for the board, for the four of us who were actually, uh, toured the Great Falls, the older section of the high school, um, I see under roofing, there's nothing listed of, under old school roof. Um, Mr. Bar, are we going to address the part of the building that's still used where there is an issue? Oh, this is the old one.
This is one from way back. Yeah, that's not the current.
Okay. Well, that's good.
That's the fall of twenty-four.
Okay.
So, your, your question regarding Great Falls High School roofing, Ms. Fork, that's actually on the, um, five-year capital plan, the updated one for two thousand twenty-nine thirty.
It is, but the, the area that we saw that was leaking so badly, if we wait to two thousand and twenty-nine thirty, that area will be in worse shape because we had furniture and equipment stored in those hallways and the water was leaking into the building. And, uh, we actually had to ask that some of the furniture, brand-new furniture be moved so it would not be damaged. So, I'm very concerned about that.
We discussed this morning, Ms. Fork, about the furniture in there.
Yes, sir.
And we will be, maintenance will be working to move those, but again, the board has to make a decision, how much money are we going to put into a building we haven't used in five years? So, again, if that's the pleasure of the board to replace a roof on a building we haven't used, then administration will do that. Um, but again, we have to, as we discussed before, we, the question has to be, we, I'm asking, what does the board want us to do with this building that we're not, that's not being utilized? That portion of it. We're not tearing down the whole school, so please do not go out, out of here saying that. I'm just talking about the portion of the school that hasn't been used in five years. I just want to see where, as administration, I can support replacing a roof that's going to be in the millions of dollars for a building that we don't use. So, we are replant, repairing, repairing the portion that where students are still utilizing in the band and what's the other? In the chorus rooms. But, the board would need to tell us, if you want us to allocate funds to repair a roof on a building we don't use.
Well, we need to have a plan, one way or another.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you.
So, and just to, just to clarify on that, so, on the five-year capital improvement plan for Great Falls High School, the roof, one point three-five million, that, that is not for the front section, right? That it, that is for the replacement of the back section.
Of the back section where the chorus, the band room, and the JRL TC room is.
So, the-
And also that, that, the gymnasium roof.
So, the section that she's referring to, we actually don't have any estimates or have any, anything. That's not on the plan, right?
I don't have any estimates on that. We, we looked at, uh, we looked at that portion about a year ago that had skylights that were embedded in the roof and everything, and that roof was rotten. So, I can get estimates on that if, if the board desires.
We just need to decide what we're going to do because by this time, it won't matter.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, next for the superintendent's report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Board members, public, those watching on live stream, I have several updates that I'll share with you and recognitions, and we'll move on from there. Uh, first up, uh, Louisville's band highlights on Saturday, April, this past Saturday, uh, the following students participated in the South County Band Directors Association Soul and Ensemble Festival at Dutch Fork High School, uh, with Asher McCory, Melody Yon, Anna Burris, Melody Yon and Ryan Brown, Sullivan Shive, uh, Neely Simpson, Reina Foster-in-Chief, Cabbage Stock. And again, this information will be online, uh, for those to, who would like to go back and look at those. And it will also be a part of the board's hot, board highlights document that we send out. So, I won't read all of the, uh, the airs of that. Louisville's High School Band, again, uh, the indoor percussion band finished the season with a stellar performance with an overall excellent rating for the season. So, let's give them a round of applause. Uh, Chester High School Athletic Recognitions, the boys' wrestling team was honored at the State House for their historic twenty-two-four, twenty-five, two-way state wrestling championship win. And the Chester Cyclones defeated American Leadership Academy nine to five in the Founders and Midlands Honda Invitational Baseball Tournament over, uh, spring break. Louisville's High School, the Lady Lion State Championship Volleyball Team, they are also recognized at the State House for their victory as well. Uh, Staff Recognizations, uh, congratulations to Ms. Jennifer Gaston, Gaston of Chester Park School of Enquirer for receiving the Jesse Williams Little Honorable Mention Award from Winthrop University. And this award is, uh, given to mentor teachers who offer support and guidance to new educators. And we also had, uh, our teachers from Jamaica, they participated in the thirtieth annual Columbia International Festival. And at this festival, they, uh, it was held at the state fairgrounds in Columbia, South Carolina, and they showcased the diverse cultures represented in South Carolina through music, food, and performing arts. So, we had several, those are teachers there. And I see Ms. Morgan was, you were part of that, right, Ms. Morgan? She has those roots? So, all right. Uh, and as mentioned earlier by Ms. Bridges, here's some photos from our CCSD Battle of the Books that occurred, uh, before we ended school for spring break. And as a part of that, uh, you had winners where the red team from Chester Middle was first place, the white team from Louisville's Middle, second place, and the black team, Great Falls, was third place. Let's give those students a hand. And here's some photos from our GT Tire Steam Competitions, and our winners were the elementary level, Louisville Elementary, Middle was Louisville Middle, and High School's Great Falls High School. So, let's give those students a round of applause. Definitely thanks to all of those who participated with the, with the program, uh, the CNI Department, of course, allow those, uh, on that team help to decorate and organize. So, thank you all for the work that you did before this program, the competition. Here's some photos from our JRL TC Military Balls, this is Chester High's ball. And we also had our book publishing party at Louisville Elementary School. And I would like to recognize those teachers from Louisville Elementary, Ms. Rawlings and Ms. Ware for inviting district staff and parents to their book publishing party on April first. Guests were able to read stories composed by students about their favorite animals. So, we were able to go around the rooms, read their stories, and we provided feedback for the students as we walked around and read those stories. So, they did a great job. This is my second year, um, being, going down and being able to, to participate with those students. So, definitely enjoyed that. And- And also on- Several adminis-, district administrators and board members attended the Chester County Legislative Breakfast on March thirty-first at the Gateway Conference Center. Uh, I would like, definitely like to thank Senator Everett Stubbs for inviting the staff to participate. Members of the, uh, Chester County Delegation were present, and Attorney General Alan Wilson for the state of South Carolina also shared information with all of those in attendance for that. And also, as, uh, some of you follow me on, on, uh, on X, and on, on social media, you saw that, uh, National School Library Week, I always go out to the elementary schools and read a book to the students. And that's something that really, uh, something, if you're ever feeling down in the dumps, go read to an elementary student. And they were just, uh, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed and you would never know they would cause them, they're, they're, you know, disruptive at all or anything. They were just excited, sitting in Indian style on the floor and, and just enjoying the superintendent reading to them and ass- asking questions. So, definitely thanks to our elementary principals and your, uh, the teachers that allowed me to come into your, to your schools and buildings to read to those students. So, again, if you're ever feeling down in the dumps, just go read to some students and that'll brighten your day. Because it definitely made my day, being, being able to do that. So. A couple other, uh, just quick updates, um, just as a reminder, as Dr. Khalid already mentioned, uh, remind everyone that our, we are entering state testing season for, that will start on May fifth through the fifteenth. I definitely encourage all students and parents to make sure the students are prepared and they go to bed at a reasonable time, uh, reasonable time, and make sure they can get up on time and report to school on time and be able to eat, uh, a breakfast before testing each of those mornings. And I remind the board again that May, the month of May is a very busy month for state testing and school events. Our calendar events will be sent to the board, so that you all are aware of end-of-year school events that will take place across our district. And one, I received a couple, a question about the twenty-five-hundred dollars retention bonus, when will that be paid out for those teachers who are eligible for those classroom-based teachers? That will be, will be paid out on June sixth, twenty-twenty-five. So, again, we received a couple of questions about when that will be paid out. So, that twenty-five-hundred dollars retention bonus for those classroom-based teachers will be paid out on June sixth, twenty-twenty-five. I would also like to ask the public to keep the, uh, Lexington Two School District students in your thoughts and prayers from Pine Ridge Middle School after the tragic bus accident on I-77 over a week ago that occurred within our county borders on I-77. The district is continuing to be in contact with the district for support, and we're working on some things to possibly take down there too, uh, to the district over the next week or two, just to show support. Because again, we will want, the same if that happened to us, we will want others in the state to support us as well, as well. So, just keep them in your thoughts and prayers on that. All right. Sure, that concludes my report.
All right, next, we will have an executive session, um, a second executive session tonight. So, do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation process?
Madam Chair, I move that we go into executive, second executive session to discuss the superintendent's evalu- evaluation program.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion? I'm sorry. All those in favor of moving into executive session is actually going to be for two, two purposes, um, to discuss the superintendent's evaluation process and to discuss a student matter concerning instructional materials, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are now in our second executive session. That motion carries unanimously. We are now in our second executive session.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion that we return from executive session into public session?
I make a motion that we return from executive session back into public session.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of returning to public session, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are now in open session. All right, returning from executive session, we have a few action items. The first is the approval of the district strategic plan and school renewal plans. Do I have a motion that we approve the district strategic plan and school renewal plans?
I make a motion that we approve them.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
All those in favor of approving the foreign exchange program as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the foreign exchange program as presented, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, next we have the approval of the first reading of policy J D purchasing amendment. Do I have a motion that we approve, do I have a motion on the floor that we approve the first amendment of policy J D purchasing amendment?
Madam Chairman, I approve the purchasing amendment.
All those in favor of approving the first reading of policy J D purchasing amendment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, one last little, just quick note I wanted to make. Just on behalf of the board, we would like to extend our condolences and sympathies to Pine Ridge Middle School in Lexington, too. I also wanted to just say how grateful and thankful we are for our first responders, our law enforcement, everyone who responded to the events on April 17th. I also wanted to commend our superintendent and his staff, Mr. Barr and Mr. Alicia, for their rapid response. So, most people probably don't know this, but when the call originally hit the scanner, I think the news reported 1:47, within three or four minutes, I was notified by Aaron Mosley of Chester County Council, and I immediately reached out to Dr. Sutton, and within one minute I had a reply, and within about five minutes, we knew that it was not one of our school buses. So, that's something that just happened behind the scenes, and I just want to make sure that I call out Dr. Sutton and his staff, Dr. Sutton for quickly responding and for, you know, letting us know that it was not one of our school buses, and even with that, he still sent support, Mr. Barr and Mr. Alicia. So, I did want to thank you, Dr. Sutton. It was rapid and quick response, and, you know, it was a terrible incident, but, you know, we were grateful that within minutes, our internal communication, we were aware that none of our students were involved, but we were able to send support to the accident. So, thank you for that.
Thank you all.
If the young man that got killed in Rock Hill, if he is one of our students or not, I hadn't heard anybody say anything, the media has not covered that. They just said he's 16 years old, so I figure, is he one of our students or is he home schooled? Okay, okay, because my condolences go out to that family as well.
Yes, condolences to his family as well. All right, with that, do I have a motion that we adjourn?
Madam Chairman, second.
First, second. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? With that, we are adjourned.